...this meeting, you can stand please for the prayer.
Family fathers, we gather here this evening. David is not with us and the best we know that he's in Indianapolis with his mother at Methodist Hospital. So right now, we just want to say a special prayer for David and that entire family as they're gathered in a hospital. We thank you for the contributions that family has made to this community. And we just pray that right now, they might realize that as we begin this meeting, we're thinking of them. We thank you for the beauty of this day. We thank you that spring is coming and we see it all around us. We thank you for everybody that's here this evening to contribute to what we do here in this town. We ask on behalf of each member of this council that you give us wisdom. We pray these things in your son's name, amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone needs to make sure their mobile devices are turned off so that we can hear. First item we have is approval of a minute, one nineteen sixteen and two twenty-nine sixteen. You want them one at a time or not?
We can do them together unless somebody...
I don't have a copy of that. I wouldn't expect all of those. Was everybody present for the particular dates?
Once in executive session.
That's the one I seen. That was the only one I seen. I didn't see the others. But I mean, if everybody was present, we just do one.
Yes, three more.
I'll make a motion and we'll get through it.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, five votes. Okay, now we need a motion for the approval of the claim. Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, five votes.
Then I do have a claim that I need to get an approval for to be dispersed in my RSRF loan. And so that's from Strand and Associates. And the total is eight thousand sixty-four dollars and four cents. Seven thousand two forty-five for contract administration. Eight nineteen oh four for staff engineer.
What was the grand total?
Eight thousand sixty-four dollars and four cents.
I'll make the motion that we approve that claim.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five votes. Okay, now we're to open. Project updates. Trina Carter.
Okay. We have several projects still ongoing. The Town Hall Building Committee met on March fifteenth. We discussed the procurement of architectural services through the quality-based selection process. Yeah, I believe Tim has... There you are. Tim has a recommendation for the council as far as what we would want to do.
Oh, I do.
Remember when I said, "Tim?"
Okay, basically, what we are recommending is that the council would see fit to... You mean, exact term?
Procure architectural services?
That's what it means. Basically, what that does is it gets us to point to where we've got a figure to go off of as to what we would be looking towards during the Town Hall. And that would give us an idea whether it's feasible to even go any further or not. And just kind of get you a rough start on it. Did I cover that good enough?
Yeah, and I'll elaborate a little bit more. What we would do, this would be for the funding through USDA Community Facilities Program. In order to meet their requirements, preliminary architectural report has to be completed before we can even determine the amount. I mean, it, in that preliminary architectural report, it talks about the site plan. It talks about preliminary drawings. And it also would give cost estimates. And without those, we don't know if it's even feasible for the community to build a new structure. I did check with USDA to see if there was any grant funding that would assist with the preliminary architectural report funding. And they said, "No, but if you do move forward with the USDA Community Facilities Loan for the structure or construction, then you can roll that into the loan." So that's kind of where we are. So I'd like, I guess...
What's projected cost on that?
We don't know. Because we don't, I mean, that's a part of what preliminary architectural report will detail.
No, I mean projected cost on the, on this...
Well, on the study?
Yes.
I really, I've not had one of these before, so I am guessing, very rough guess. I would say approximately twenty thousand just for the study. I mean, I don't know. It could be anywhere from ten thousand to twenty thousand. I really do not know. Well, and that's why when you go through the qualification-based selection process, what happens is you select an architect or engineering firm based on their qualifications. Then you negotiate the cost of the study. And that's, that would be where we are right now. You can procure and, I mean, what we could do is procure and see what we give back as far as the respondents who responds to it. Then we could actually negotiate costs and with the caveat that if it's not feasible to even do the study as far as those costs, then we notify them that we're unable to continue.
Now, that study is based on a site built, a site building, standalone building?
To go back, I think, to help clarify your question. What we're looking at as a definite out-of-pocket expense right now is basically the advertising for these bids. That we're not looking at putting ourselves out there susceptible to having to pay twenty thousand dollars right now. This phase right here, we would be out the advertisement for the bids and the time that we spend evaluating, I guess you want to say. And then that would give us something to go on if we want to proceed from there. But yeah, to answer your second question, yeah, we're looking at a new building on this site.
Have you considered an existing building? Have you looked, have you looked at what the community has to offer as far as existing buildings? And any thought put into renovation, what we currently may have in the community?
All right, now we've looked at this. I know there's been discussions, I should say relaxed discussions. One concern is unlike if you was to take something off on the square, you're taking retail off the square, which is not a desirable thing. So now, we've been looking at the cost of putting a new building here. Now, should that become prohibitive or something, then we might need to look at other things too. It's just, we're very preliminary. We have no idea what we're even looking at. And then getting the funding, you know, if we got a cost, then we can look at how to fund it and then look how to pay for it. Thanks for clarifying that again.
I think they've done everything we've asked them to do from the get-go. And I'd like to see you take the next step.
Well...
That's me.
Okay. And what I would, what I would ask is that if you decide that we move forward, that I send the scope of work. I'll send you the, you may have the preliminary architectural report by once.
Okay, and there's some on the table as well.
So those, that's the, that is what we have to have in order to go for USDA funding. So that is what we procure based on those standards.
Well, I agree with Greg. I think it's a starting point. And I applaud what you've done so far, even though, you know, ten phrases, it is very preliminary. I mean, it's got to start somewhere. And I think we need to go ahead and take this next step and see where we're at. I mean, right now, it's just like shooting in the dark, I think, so. I would agree with Greg that this is a step we need to take. And I'll, if Greg wants to make that motion, I'll second that.
Yeah, I would like to make that as a, as a motion to move forward.
Then I will second that claim.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, five votes.
Thank you, I'll go ahead and look at three of those same points.
If I could, just to, for a little bit more information and correct me if I'm wrong. If we get to that point, even with the preliminary architect, that fancy word, even if we use that and then decide at this time, it's not a feasible project, we can still retain that portion of what we spent if it come back into effect, say, for four years, correct? So you would not have to duplicate that loss or that expense a second time. So you basically have that part prepaid in the future.
How long is the study good for, then? You were saying three, four, five years?
I don't even have a estimate. Check on that.
I would say the study is, I mean, they would likely want it to be updated if you waited three or four, five years.
Three or four years, yeah.
They would likely, they, the USDA would likely want it updated. But I would say the general requirements will still be there.
Okay.
The cost is primarily what we need to be updating. And if anything changed within the community.
Okay, what else you have?
Okay. Hope Main Street met last week. We also met with the Oakwood Community Liaison on the downtown revitalization plan. And now, the next step is to, again, determine scope and procure architectural services for a downtown revitalization plan. It looks like we're looking at procuring again. But this would declare the downtown, we would have to have a resolution to declare the downtown an area in need of revitalization and determine selection committee. And I guess I need guidance from you as to whether you want to go ahead and procure architectural services for this downtown revitalization plan.
When you talk about revitalization, what, can you give me a definition for that? What do you mean?
The state of Indiana has a part of their...
Does it talk about bringing in business or doing facelift or what are we doing?
It's more facelift. I do have, I didn't bring copies, but I do have the downtown revitalization standards, the minimum requirements that Oakwood has. And I can forward that to the council. Basically, it has a roadmap similar to the preliminary architectural report right there that says, okay, basically, you delineate what you want done, or it's a roadmap, more or less, what you want done in your downtown. And then, in incremental stages. So, you know, it may be stage one, that would be possibly streetscape. Stage two, maybe improved facades or improvements to the park. I mean, it basically, downtown revitalization is to revitalize your downtown. And it's primarily facelift-type. You know, it's more construction, more hard costs as opposed to soft costs as far as, you know, bringing in businesses and things like that, business recruitment. That's not generally a part of these dollars. These are more construction dollars after the planning study is complete.
Is this something that the business, the business owners have to buy into, go right?
If we're looking at facades, yes, you would want them to buy into that. But the down, but the streetscapes, you would want their input. You would want to make sure that it didn't detract from their businesses. But I don't know that it would require them to be, sign on and say, "Yes, this is exactly what I want done." I mean, I guess I don't understand your question fully.
I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to understand what you're... I think we're both not understanding, but...
We've got to talk about each other.
But, and that's, and that's not uncommon for me. When, the one we talked about, the revitalization of downtown, are you going to mark the streets? Like have arrows on the streets? Because that's, like, for example, I see people going the wrong way on the wrong side of the street all the time.
Okay.
And some definition there and maybe some, some simple things like that.
If that's something that you want as a part of your downtown revitalization? One of the, some of the stakeholders that will be interviewed or will be, will be contributing to this will be the council. He'll want the council to contribute. We'll also want the Main Street Committee or your board to participate in that as well. The businesses that will be impacted, you'll want them. And you'll want community participation in this plan because you want it to be something that the community as a whole wants within their downtown. The specifics, I don't know if it'll be that specific as far as arrows on the streets, you know, painted on the streets.
Would be that defended?
That's to be determined.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
I mean, would you like me to forward the downtown revitalization? Okay.
I have too much stuff now. Where are you guys?
You don't need anything more?
I have.
But that would be what we would need to do in order to move that forward. We have basically nine months in order to procure and procure services and put together an application to submit to the state. So I just wanted to bring that back to you.
Wasn't one of the items that we asked about was the possibility of putting restrooms over in the square?
We did mention that. Potentially improvements to the square. Because your downtown has the unique feature of having your own town square park. And I know that was one of the things that we've talked about. So a couple of years ago, actually, doing some community facility improvements in your park. Public facility improvements in your park. Like restrooms and that type of thing. So I guess I need you to give me direction on whether you are wanting to move forward on that as well. I would try to time it so those don't all come out at the same time. I think it might be a little bit of an overload, but at least...
I think, I think we're committed with this. It is part of the comprehensive plan.
It is.
And if we have this plan in place, we have a better chance of getting grants going forward.
For the implementation of the plan, yes. It all kind of goes on.
Yeah. Well, I, I agree again, Greg. I'm going to keep agreeing with you if you keep saying that stuff. I, I think, I think it's another step that we need to be willing to take right now in order to potentially do things in the future, so.
Is that a motion?
I'll make it a motion and if you'd like to second it...
And I'll, I'll second your motion.
Thank you, sir.
Got a motion and a second. We have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five votes.
So I, and on that, that is, actually, that is only, that would only be a ten percent match requirement on that plan. So it's not, you would not be up for full or not full plan, so. Anyway, then, also, there's just a couple more things. We talked briefly after the meeting, the Main Street meeting regarding facade renovations and looking at possibly having a facade renovation or rehab program potentially funded, maybe with Edith or something like that, for the downtown square. And at the Main Street meeting, we also talked about potentially going for a downtown enhancement grant that may help, maybe work with funding facade renovations and rehabilitation program, grant program. With potential that the business owners could provide dollar-for-dollar match for possibly paint. You know, up to like maybe a thousand dollars, a hundred, a thousand dollars. It matched dollar-for-dollar, the town would assist through it. So that is just something that is thrown out for food for thought.
And we discussed when to make the total amount to ten thousand dollars. And each business had the possibility of doing a thousand dollars where the Edith funds would pay out five hundred and they would pay out five hundred for their property. So it spurs a little bit to, if anything, done outside the business. And that's any business in this town, not just the square.
Could it be primarily for outside and fix-ups, not for interior work outside? So something for that, and I can bring something, I can bring some type of application process back to you at the next meeting if you'd want to look at something.
Next one.
Okay, hold it out. And then, I think that's, that's all I have right now.
Okay, water improvement project update.
People first. I'm Steve Robertson. The projects moved along pretty nice and succeeded in tearing up about fifty percent of the streets east of the Main Street. Nice gravel, nice dust. The schedule is moving along, like I said, they are actually ahead of schedule. We now have a revised schedule that we're looking at probably a completion closer to in October instead of the original November date. We have had two crews here in town working, so that's moving things along. For those of you who are curious, we have to wait for the asphalt plants to open, which is typically mid-April. So it could be another month or two before any of these streets are put back like they are. You know, I do have, I do check them every day, make sure the crew goes around and fixes up the chuck holes and stuff to the best of their abilities. They did start filling one of the water lines today, which is a good sign. We have found a couple of major leaks. One of them we fixed. The other one, we decided it wasn't worth the time and effort to fix because we're going to be deleting it here in another couple of months. They will be moving to the west side, starting either tomorrow or the day after, and work on those mains. And then we'll come back and start doing testing and water services.
Question?
Yes.
So we've got a new line, for the most part, running in the middle road?
Yes.
Maybe you guys know. I don't, I don't, I'm asking.
How?
Does each homeowner, how does that connection happen?
Okay, after the lines are chlorinated and they pass all the bacterial tests and stuff, and contractor is responsible for, and he does pressure testing to make sure there's no leaks. Then the contractor comes back, he taps the new line, runs a new service over to the meter, and switches those property owners open. And as each section gets completed, they will cut the old main at the ends and cap it and everybody will be working on it. So they'll probably do it from valve to valve, which is approximately, every block or so, they'll do that. They'll start switching people over. They have to wait for the main to be tested and pass the bacteria test. Which is the next step to get that done.
So the roads will probably...
The roads stay.
Have another cut?
Yes.
There'll be another cut?
There'll be another small cut to each meter.
So will you just wait and do the road repair after everything's completed?
They'll do the road, hopefully, the plan is, is as they get blocks done and they get enough, they'll bring the paving crew in and do the initial patching. And then towards the end of the job is when they will mill and overlay everything, so.
One more question, so will a homeowner possibly have more pressure?
Tony?
Or volume, I mean...
Maybe more volume pressure? No, pressure's dependent on the water towers and stuff. You've got to get them higher in the air if you want more pressure, put a pump in and then we're not... They could have more volume because a lot of the lines being replaced are like the two and three inch, the lines...
Absolutely.
With four and six inch. So, you know, what you may notice is that if everybody on one block's trying to do laundry at the same time, you know, the guy at the end doesn't have any water pressure.
Correct.
Well, that's going to help the situation.
So possibly no chance of a homeowner having a weak pipe?
Not really, well, I won't say, won't say never.
Right.
But...
That's what I'm saying, I mean...
The pressure really shouldn't go up. It's, it's going to be more in the volume, you're going to see. So like I say, if you're on the end of a, a small line and like you're trying to do laundry, but other people are using it and you can tell, I mean, you've been there. This should help that situation. You're going to have better flow, not, not any pressure.
I know, I know about the flush, I told them my wife's taking a shower.
Yeah, exactly.
If the water gets cold.
Yeah.
It'll also help with, you know, we're either reconnecting fifty hydrants to a six-inch line and we're adding six new hydrants throughout town.
Right.
So it's going to help, you know, the fire protection aspect. Or if they unfortunately are drawing water someplace else, you should still be able to have water at your location, you know, as far as that goes.
And with the additional fire hydrants throughout, throughout all this, it's possible that a homeowner could revisit their insurance and maybe get a different rate?
And might be able to share, but the way I understand is they come around every two years. Does that sound about right?
I think it depends on its government. It's just depending.
I talked to Bruce in the city about, once we get this all done, they'd have the, the fire rating people come back in and look at the new system and then maybe be able to...
Once you get it in, you can, you can request an ISO rating again?
I would say that's probably part of the contract we approved a couple, a couple meetings ago.
And I did talk to Bruce Neal about that early on, because, you know, he had a little, we, the Fire Department gives a little input on that. Like I said, we're increasing, all the hydrants will be off at least a four-inch line. Most of them will be a six-inch line. You know, they're up to date. And we added, we're replacing, we're rehooking, making sure all those are good and operational and stuff.
We will have that second connection to Eastern Bethalm too, if it's not in place right now. Put down a miller to marry manor. That second connection for redundancy gun.
Now, when you're doing this blacktop, the final blacktop will be the whole entire street, correct?
Yes. Yeah, they'll, they will mill edge to edge. We'll mill off an inch and a half. We have pay items in there that if there is some bad asphalt underneath, we can wedge and level the street back up and take out the dips and stuff before we put a new surface coat, course on there.
I wasn't for sure. I didn't realize that was, that was going to be a complete...
Most of the streets, not every street that we're working on will get overlaid. Most of the streets will get overlaid.
So what did we do where we have a street that has so much blacktop on it that you only got three inches of hurt? And you go put another inch of blacktop on it?
We're going to mill off an inch and a half and put back an inch and a half. So it'll stay the same height.
So the entire street's going to be milled?
Entire street will get milled off.
Oh, I thought it was just going to be in so much of the cut.
No, entire street, on the streets that get overlaid are resurfaced, I should say. We'll, we'll mill the entire street and put it back. Then there are a few spots in town that it's only the trench line that's going to get because those streets weren't that bad to warrant resurfacing. You know, I don't know, off the top of my head, I think they're on the west side. They're just, you know, like, we're only at, make it go straight across the street from alley to alley. We're just going to patch back in that trench, not do the entire street. Because the limits won't let us go that far. Okay, so they did turn in a pay application, and now we'll turn that over to Tony.
All right. Yeah, Lykan's turned in a pay application. They didn't turn one in last month. We asked them, they said, "No, don't worry about it." Okay, but, so this is for work that was done in January and February. So the amount they're requesting for dates is four hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. Of that, though, five percent of that is held in rent... Of that though, five percent of that is held in retain for the contract. Uh, and that's, the retainage is twenty-one thousand, fifty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. So the amount they are due this application is four hundred thousand, sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Uh, Steve has reviewed it, I've reviewed it, we checked all the math and everything like that. Uh, everything is good, so we would recommend a payment from the council tonight. And if you guys do approve, I'll get a copy to Trina to get to Carrie and one to Diane. And then, um, and Trina, I'm gonna put you on the spot maybe. Uh, Carrie's gonna probably figure out how it gets separated between Oka Grant and SRF.
She'll give you the percentage, because that's what you have to do for her.
Okay, that's what I thought, and she, she knows all about that. So part of it will come from the Oka Grant, part of it will come from the SRF grant on, on there, but we'll let Carrie figure that out. So at this point, any questions? They're basically requesting about twenty percent, um, and they're probably right at that, a little over now. Yeah, some of the store materials they have on site, we can't pay them for materials they've already purchased. They have all the, have all the receipts, that's why it's so thick, they have so thick. But they are moving on pretty well, like I said, Steve said with the two crews, they've, they're doing pretty good.
I would make a motion that we approve that as presented.
I'll second. And a motion to second any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion Carrie's five long.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is that it? Okay, send me.
Um, we're gonna revisit topics from last month. It was, uh, we had a first reading of an ordinance, basically codifying our town code as of a certain date, so we'd know what it was going forward. And so we're back tonight for a second reading and hopefully confirmation of a motion.
I'll make the motion that we adopt ordinance twenty sixteen dash zero two.
Got a motion, you'll have a second.
I'll second this motion.
Yeah, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion Carrie's five long. That all you got there?
It is until new business.
Uh, Fire Department grant update, Randy Wood.
Yeah, I just wanna let y'all know we're, uh, moving forward. Bring all of our, starting to get our equipment up to the present. Uh, thanks to your town grant writer and Chad, my first assistant chief, they've been working together. We have a grant for a truck, we have a grant for SCBA, the reading apparatus. And we just applied for the, uh, what was that grant she gave me that one day, the, uh?
Endowment fund.
Endowment fund. We haven't heard anything back yet from any of those grants, but we do have a grant for the new SCBA and the grant out there for the truck. And then, uh, the endowment fund is for a new saw. It's like a, a extrication saw, it's a big saw, so that's more of that with that. I just wanna thank again for the, well, she's a town grant writer, makes a big difference when you're trying to get something. That's pretty much all I got right now.
Okay. Uh, Fire Department, REEDY Financial update, I'm not gonna get into. Uh, the figures that I got is not sufficient enough to even present to the council at this time. And so I'm in contact with the gentleman from REEDY to get us a little bit more specific information. New business. Spark requests community center for a carnival.
Yes, sir. Hi, my name's Tom Cuneo, I'm the president of the Community Center Board Directors. Um, I only have four of these, so you guys have to share. Um, we would like to revitalize, uh, what my understanding was, a, a tradition and hope for some time in bringing in a fair slash carnival. Um, we've got a vendor that is, uh, this, this is for a benefit. Um, we've got a vendor lined up with the Hughesman amusement company out of Shelbyville. Um, they've put together a proposal to bring in, uh, twelve different rides, uh, four food trailers and eight to ten game booths. Um, and we would like to ask the council to allow us to shut the square down from the twenty-sixth until the thirty-first. Uh, the carnival is the twenty-seventh through the thirtieth, but we need a day, a little bit over data. Uh, May, it's Memorial Day weekend. And we need a day or so to set up everything and then tear everything down after the fact. Um, what you have in front of you is our basic plan, um, a map of the outline of the square and where we propose to put certain things and how much we need to close off. Um, in addition, um, our emergency plan is included as well.
And what dates were that, was that again?
Uh, the, the town, the square would need to be closed the twenty-sixth of May to the thirty-first of May, which is a Thursday through, uh, Tuesday. The actual carnival slash fair would take place on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, and part of the day on Monday.
So you're just asking for the inside?
We're basically asking for the inside loop of, of the square. Uh, we're not planning on setting up any rides or anything on the actual lawn of the square or, um, and, or, you know, anything like that that would cause any kind of damage to the, to the actual square itself.
You still have traffic in the outside?
You still have traffic all the way around the outside loop, yes, sir. And we've talked to and met with the, uh, the vendor for the, the carnival, and he says that that would be plenty fine. He's got, that's, gives you plenty of room. We've got plenty of room to put up the barricades around to, uh, uh, prevent any kind of issues, so. We will set up that weekend a, um, temporary headquarters over in the annex. Um, that's where we would actually have that manned by a board member, um, the entire, somebody would be there the entire time as part of our emergency plan, so that if we had a lost child situation or a weather situation, we have somebody on site, um, all the time monitoring.
What's your hours of operation?
Um, Friday, I think we're gonna do Friday, uh, five to nine, uh, ten to eight or nine on Saturday, uh, noon to six or seven on Sunday, uh, and then like ten to three or ten to four on that Monday Memorial Day. And, and those aren't set in stone, we're still kinda discussing that a little bit as well.
Matt, I got, I got a question for Matt.
Yes.
Have you looked at this?
I have not.
Okay. I think it'd probably be a good idea.
Yeah, I did, yeah, today's the first I've heard of it.
Okay. Um, you, you own the lot right there on the, on the north side of the square, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Uh, any exposure to putting all this over there?
Um, I don't think that there was room for it, that was my understanding of it. Um, and the lot, uh, depending upon the weather as well, that, that lot currently gets kinda muddy for, for foot traffic. If it, if we end up with a real rainy weekend, then, um, it could pretty, pretty much close it down, I think.
I think we're gonna need some input on insurance coverage and amounts, because I have no idea and what they're able to provide.
Being in that, being in that industry, I, I think we're gonna be looking at a couple of things that, that their vendors are gonna be providing certificates of insurance.
We, we will, they will provide, they will have a certificate of insurance with the Town of Hope on it for that will leave the specific rides. We also have our liability policy in place that we're, we'll add the Town of Hope as well to. And then we will also have, um, once we get the approval or the, from the council, if we get the approval from the council, we'll proceed with obtaining the safety permits from the state. Uh, and then we will have a state, um, all rides will be inspected by a state inspector before, uh, it will.
I honestly think this is probably a, a good idea, although I think we're, we're, we're running into a time crunch and this should've been presented in January.
Yes. We, we, we understand we're under a time crunch.
I, I mean, I, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I think that this, this is, uh... I don't think we're prepared to make a decision on this tonight.
Okay.
You know, without Cindy's brought up some things, I think the police department needs to be involved.
Okay.
If.
So where are you at on, I mean, the part?
Would the April give, give you enough time?
Um. Is it, is it, is it always towards the end of the month? It's like, how's the third week?
Yeah, um, we meet the seventh of April, so we should be able to discuss it at our board meeting and then bring it back to the town council.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
I mean, I don't think any of us wants, wants to say no, I think it's just, um...
We just need to be, there's a big guess here for me, but I just think we need to, this should've been brought up a lot earlier than, than now.
We had, we, we missed the, the last meeting, I think like a day, or the last month's, uh, being able to get it in here a, a day or so before the chance to get on the agenda for last month, so. Um, it was our intent and we didn't get, didn't get it in, in, in time, basically, so.
Is there anything, any other activities that I am, do you keep track of that, or you have that calendar?
They are, um, penciled in on the calendar, so if you guys decide, um, you have them.
Nothing else going on that?
Correct.
We would, it would be our goal to make this an annual event as well, so we would like to re, re, we'd like to find an actual formal marketable name for the event as a spring festival and, and have that every year and hope that possible.
What are you, who are you looking to reach?
Um, it's a family, a family type event, um, so families, parents, um, we will have, we'll have a good bit of kids, kid rides and kid games there. Uh, we'll also have some rides that are gonna be adult and as well as teenage friendly, so we'll, we, we hope to draw everybody. We really want this to be a, um, a really big thing for the town every year.
These food booths you're talking about? Who are they, who's this guy?
Um, actually, that's part of the Hughesman, and, uh, they're talking about bringing in like popcorn, cotton candies, uh, funnel cake and, and elephant ears, a pizza trailer, and then like a sausage with pepper and onions trailer. Um, we're also open and discussing it with our board to allow, um, booths within the, uh, from a community perspective, like softball teams, uh, boy scouts, things like that, to have booths to set up to help their organizations as well.
How about the Fire Department if they?
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna say.
Uh, that would, that we, we had actually had that, talked about that, doing, you know, coordinating that with a fish fry or something with the garden as well.
I think years and years ago, that's who used to put that.
He was, in fact, sir. In fact, I believe it was in this lot right next door here.
I don't remember it right here. I remember it over there. I'm like Jonathan, I mean, I don't think that we wanna say no, we just, we just need to make sure that it's all put together right.
Okay.
Right. Uh, I don't know, Cindy, is this, do you want? Can you give us some guidance here?
Well, uh, my guidance is that we need some insurance input, that's my, that's my main concern.
Yeah, and then.
And, you know, I, I don't know if the workers are gonna be coming over from Shelbyville or staying here like they do at a lot of fairs, that's something else.
We're gonna be setting, we're gonna be setting their trailers up at, at the community center on the backside. Um, that was our proposal, was to, so they could back their trailers in and fit their, their trailers nicely. Um, I believe the owner will actually have to keep the trailer down here within the confines of the, out of the closed off space so that he's actually on site all the time. Um, the workers will actually be down there, uh...
That'd be their labor orders?
Yeah, they, they have, they have certain trailers they bring in to events like that.
And, and I guess my other thought that, just, you know, shooting from the head here, is that, uh, do we have enough electricity over there? I mean, is that a problem?
We should, we should say.
We do.
That would be a great incentive next to that, but I would think that.
We've walked, we've walked through with him and he, he's, he's checked everything and said that we have, we have plenty of electricity and, and to meet all the needs that.
Matt, I can only assume that, you know, with what you guys go through with Perry today, probably not gonna have as big of a draw with this, but it's carried out in a longer.
Right.
You know, there's gonna probably have to be some.
She's gonna email me the entire plan tonight.
Okay.
I'll look over it. I, I don't foresee a problem.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll look over and discuss it.
Right now, I've got one very important question.
Yes, sir.
If I bring my grandchild down here and he wants to ride every ride, what's it gonna cost now?
Actually, we, we.
What's it gonna cost me?
We were, uh, what we were talking about doing is instead of doing the tickets, um, the, the community center, of course, this is a benefit for us, so we're retaining a certain percentage of the sales that they make off of everything. Um, it was our understanding and, and kind of our consensus that instead of doing per ti, per ticket prices for rides, that we would do an armband, the armbands would be twelve to fifteen dollars, it would allow you unlimited rides.
And the rides are gonna be geared toward what age group?
Um, there are gonna be two sections, there's gonna be one for the older and one for the younger. Um, I don't have a specific, um, age demographic as far as how low the ages go for specific rides, but I can find that out.
I, I would like to think that if we approved it in April, that they can make it happen. It sounds like, you know, Matt and Chelsea have already talked back there. I mean, off, off the cuff, I, I think it's worth a try, and I appreciate the community center wanting to present something like this. And, uh, so what I would suggest, Clyde, just for me, is, is that we put it on his old business for April with the intention of hopefully being able to approve it. If, if, if you do think, Tom, Teresa, Chelsea, that that would still give you enough time, then.
I think it would, I mean, I think we can, we can market it pretty quickly. We, we've got some, um, some pretty decent marketing arms right now that we can, um, wrap around this to give it to them quickly, so.
I'm not an expert, but what I see here, you've already done a lot of work and I'm impressed with what you presented.
Thank you.
Well, the person that is doing these rides, will they wait that long before they book somewhere else?
They're currently holding the date for us.
Yeah, they are holding the date for us. Um, if we, if we could go back to them and kind of say that, you know, the council's leaning towards this, but we couldn't get a formal vote, then I think that we could still hold those, do those dates, so.
I only have one other concern.
Yes, sir.
And that is that, uh, there's gonna be adequate, that we're not gonna take up parking space in the center and, uh, on the outside perimeter of the square, because we're gonna have, I mean, I've got a business on the square and right beside me, uh...
When, when I walked through, Teresa and I, and walked through with the, the vendor, that was one of the concerns I had as well. I'm also a business owner of Mountain here in Hope, but I, I can totally understand where you would not want your daily business, especially on the weekdays, uh, to be blocked. And that's why we, we chose and kinda tried to work within the confines of being inside that loop so that we did not block any outside parking. And we did not wanna block any, any businesses or entrances to any businesses or anything, so. It was a concern that we, we discussed.
I would think it would possibly bring business to the town if they move it.
Well, and I agree with Clyde, it could bring business to the town, but, uh, uh, we wanna make sure you got a place to park.
Yeah, and, uh...
And, and, uh, I mean, you're not gonna run down there and wanna buy a, a homeowner's policy from me, but you're gonna wanna go to the pawn shop or to the, and go get a long sandwich.
If they hear your name out there.
We, we really do want this to be a successful event and, and we wanna work with the town on this to be a long-term event, not just a, a one-off for us or for the town. Um, we, we screw, we feel strongly that it could be a long-term event that carries on and becomes a tradition, so.
I've got one more thing if I might, Clyde. You, you said you were, the drowers obviously aren't set yet, you were, you were looking at, at Monday, um, you said ten to four.
Yeah, we, we.
The traditional, uh, speaking as an American legionnaire here, um, we do our cemetery service at eleven.
Okay.
Uh, that's the last one we go to as we do the entire community. Personal preference would be that we wait maybe until eleven. Personal preference would be that we wait maybe until eleven thirty.
Okay.
That's just me, um, but, you know, if the weather's good, we'll have a couple hundred people down there in the cemetery, and I don't think I would wanna hear carnival ride noises intruding on what I consider to be a sacred service.
Absolutely, and, and we've also discussed that, uh, that my understanding that three P M is kind of the national recognition of the Morde, um, we have planned on stopping for a moment of silence at that time as well.
Okay, uh, we'll put this on old business for our, our next meeting, and get all those questions answered, and hopefully proceed with this.
Can I either get one of those copies, or have you emailed me copies?
Absolutely.
We have one.
Okay.
Who, who do I need to have as a contact point to, to, to clear up any miscellaneous background?
Tom, may I keep a copy?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next one is cyber business, Omar Miller.
Oh, yeah. Uh, you know, part of, one of the, some of the things that, and we're just renewing our, uh, our town, town, uh, insurance right now, uh, one of the things that's an option is the cyber liability, and we've got the option to pick up, and it's, we, when I talk about the cyber liability, it's not so much when you get hacked as, or if you get hacked, but when you get hacked. There's a lot of privileged information, uh, as far as town employees, uh, utility department, we have a lot of privileged information down there. If you wanted that, that, uh, coverage, a million dollars worth of coverage would be fourteen hundred to six dollars, uh, two million would be eighteen twenty-eight. And, this could be the cyber liability.
Wouldn't you say they're not as on ten million?
Eighteen twenty-eight. And one million is fourteen oh six. I have a question.
Yes.
Is this considered a conflict of interest? By you, by you being on it?
I can't vote on it anyway, nobody...
Still, I, I mean, did you, is there a, is there a form that needs to be filled out?
He pulled it out.
It's been filled out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No, that's a good question.
Ah, it just don't sound right, that you're presenting something to us that you benefit from. And I, and I understand, but, but if I didn't present it to you... And would you, would you felt better if I had a broker come in and done it? It might, it might look better, but I guess, that's just me. But I, I didn't know that you, that, if you filled out the, the clause of the form...
Yeah.
I've got a question on this, too. Didn't we just go through, uh, upgrade our system to prevent being hacked to start with? Quite a lot of cloud, and spend all that money to get that done, just recently.
That is supposed to help with that, yes. I don't know if it protects everything, um, but that was the reason we went to that, is to be in compliance for that. You know, I can ask them if they feel, I don't know if they would really answer that or not, if they feel cyber insurance is something we need, or if that's something they feel they cover.
Well, I think it would be a legitimate question, even if, even if they say, well, we don't really wanna answer that, I don't think there's a problem in it having her ask that.
I think that question needs to be... So we'll have to give that to you, that one more. Is that all you have?
Yeah.
Outside pet ordinance, uh, send it forward.
Y'all should've gotten, uh, by email or hard copy, the proposed ordinance. Um, I was asked to prepare this based upon the fairly recent ordinance adopted by Indianapolis that has to do with the care of animals kept outside during different weather conditions. Um, and this is pretty much verbatim what that says, I mean, the guts of it, there are parts that are changed to fit a town rather than the city of Indianapolis. So, um, uh, like I said, I was asked to get this provided, I don't know if you have any questions, but, um, I would ask that you consider this as first reading at least, or, you know, um, whatever you think is appropriate.
I'd better get it passed tonight.
And, and I think that can be done with unanimous approval to, you know, do the setup reading tonight, but we'll also need that two-thirds approval of the, um, so it's more than just the majority in favor.
Okay. Lisa, do you have a chance to look at this?
I have a chance to scan through, yes.
Comments, questions, concerns? 'Cause to a certain degree, you're the one that would be the first line of defense.
Uh, my only thing is, when I write out tickets, they don't pay them, they don't pay. I mean, there's nothing we can do about it. So, you know, I'm trying to...
Take the animal?
Huh?
Take the animal?
Well, there is, it, it's iffy on both sides, can I actually take the animal?
Well, I think, I think that's what it says in here, that...
Right, but I mean, that's, it has to get passed first.
Right.
You know, before I can actually get it. I mean, yeah, I think it's good, as long as, you know, the pet won't come after me.
Right.
If there's...
That was a question, that was a question I had, I was the one that actually brought this up, I think, back in December. You know, I seen it on the news, and I'm thinking, but my first instinct on it is, is it enforceable? You know, that's another fault on your responsibility, I mean, you, you would have everything legally if we adopted, you know, but is it enforceable?
Matt's got a second?
Yeah.
The problem is, if we don't take the animal and we ride a ticket, we got tickets in there with it, we've written people for animals running at large, they got their dogs, they've caught their dogs, we've caught their dogs running at large, they don't pay the tickets. We need something put in place to give our local ordinances some tea, to, to hold these people accountable. I know, like I told Clyde earlier, years ago, before my time, we used to have magistrate come, come in once a month and hold town court for our local ordinances. That might be something we can do, is, uh, start looking at something to start collecting on some of these local ordinances that people need to pay. Now, as far as catching the dogs, if we catch the dogs and hold them in a kennel, we do not give the dogs back until they pay.
I'm a little confused, I mean, why do we pass all these ordinances if none of them can be, uh, nothing done about it? It doesn't make any sense to me to even pass one. I mean, I don't know how many ordinances we have out there for various things, you can't beat your kid, and you can't do this, or whatever. Why are we passing them if they can't be enforced?
I think that's what Matt should bring to our attention, this ticker.
We, we need a way to start enforcing these ordinances a little more.
I don't know if that's, that's the need for, to use it.
I'm hap, well, I'm happy to look into what the requirements are for a town court, or if there was some way, I, I have heard, not seen the docu, documentation, but I've heard that towns sometimes can enter into an agreement, like with the county, to, um, do some of those cases through one of the existing courts, I think, but, but I, I can get some details on that. You know, the only other thing I can think of is, you know, we're kinda left with maybe small claims court, but then you're looking at spending way more than the fines are to get it done, and that's not what y'all wanna do, so...
Now, as far as like traffic enforcement, speeding, running stop signs, stuff like that, there are things we can do, we could always write somebody if they don't pay it, we, then we could just bump it up to a state fine and send it on to the state, but we're not getting any benefit from that if they don't pay it to us.
What is our exposure to getting somebody to run a, um, a monthly court in here?
I don't know, I, I mean, I...
And what, and what, what level of person would we need to do that?
I'd have to go look through the statute and, and come back with you with that, in terms of, to get with that information.
And Clyde did, as our council president?
Well, I thought we... I thought, I thought it states in there that the council is the executive and legislative branch of this town.
And they, and you are.
So, to me, I mean, we, we've had trials before, uh, this, well, you remember having
That was a different, that was newer.
Thank you, Lord.
There you go, that's what I wanna say.
But it was still, we were the judges, and we're supposed to be executive and legislative to branch of this town. I would think if you brought in front of this town lord and...
Do some research.
I'm happy to take a look at it.
Well, once again, I'm just going back to what I've been told, uh, in the past, it was actually one of the county magistrates that would come up here once a month, it wasn't a magistrate that the town appointed, it's actually one of them that the county points up, comes up once a month.
Let's go with first reading. That'll give her time to get an answer, bring it back to the meeting.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
And a motion. We'll give a motion.
It, it would be okay for the minutes to show if this was considered first reading tonight?
Second.
I'll start it.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, meter installation agreement.
I do have a meter installation agreement between the Town of Hope and Forest and Vicki Whittington, um, it's for a water tap in the amount of one thousand and a sewer tap in the amount of seven hundred and fifty for eight twenty-five east. And so I'm gonna need a motion for that, please.
Was that an address you gave us?
It doesn't seem like a complete address, does it? Just a eight twenty-five east. I apologize, I didn't notice that ahead of time, and David's not here, but...
I can clarify where it's at.
Okay.
It's out on the lake, it's, uh, Butch Baby had a big two-story house, got tore down, it's on...
Okay.
From Randy Bailey's, it's like three or four lots.
So you got a line, you got a line that runs on the west side of it?
Yeah, the line runs out to Miller's Merry Manor on the west side of it. It's, uh, not the north out, not the north lot, but there was a house there, it could burn at one time. It's the second one from the north, he, his lot, not the one that's building the house out.
I'll, I'll make a motion to do that.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, five hour. Okay, is there any questions or comments about committed reports? Do we have any?
Matt, how, uh, how's it coming with getting the officers certified on the, in Arcan?
Half our officers are certified, I'm working on the other half right now. We found that actually an online training course for an Arcan certification that I'm getting everyone through.
Thank you.
Any other? Any public comment?
I got a question.
What's your name?
My name's Tim Show. The agreement with the county.
I don't have that done yet, but it's on my list right here, thank you.
I'll start calling every morning.
Eight oh five.
Eight oh five, okay. I'll get up early. Anybody else? Meeting's adjourned.